Hi, I'm Robin Schultz with the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
And who got told the process? The people that wanted to vote and the people that didn't want to vote, they didn't tell them where to go. And it was very, very difficult. There was, this is in my life, this is when I was 18 years old. I came to college at 17. The election was that November and I could not get back to Thomasville on Tuesday night from Sanford, between when I got here in August and when the vote took place in November. So I did not get to vote in the election in 1980 and thus Jimmy Carter lost to Ron Reagan. There might have been other reasons, but you know, but that was part of it, right? So, so my passion is making it easier for people to vote. The Secretary of State can do that. There are ways when you can make it easier. If y'all saw the contrast, if anyone saw the Channel 42 report that came last week, and we'll post it on my website very soon if you didn't see it. They interviewed the three folks, the two Republicans who announced they're running are Caroline Dawson, who ran against Sherwin Figures last year, and a guy named Andrew Sorrells, who's the current state auditor. The two of them were running. Basically, when they asked them about why don't you want to be Secretary of State, their responses were, "We've got to have a task force that goes after people who are voting illegally." That's what Caroline Dawson said. And what, and what Andrew Sorrells said is, "We know there's a lot of fraud in voting in the state of Alabama and we've got to put a stop to it." Well, I'll tell you what the fraud is, folks. The fraud is not enough people get a chance to vote. That's the fraud. The fraud is not that too many people are voting. The fraud is that not enough people are voting. And I know they're not voting because I go out and see them every day when I work for the sheriff's office. And I talk to them and they're like, "No, I haven't voted in 20 years." You know, do you realize, folks, that there are people in this county alive today who bled their own blood for you to have a chance to vote? They're still alive. Okay. Soapbox is here. I'm stepping off of that table. All right, so without further ado, I do want to introduce a couple of folks who are here with us tonight. This is city council candidates. Mr. Schultz, right? So we're going to get you in. You're going to have five minutes on it. If you heard me, did you hear everything I said just then? So you'll come right after, you'll come right after Ms. Patel, okay? For place one, that'll be coming up in just a little while. So you will be the third person up after we, after, after I stop ranting and raving and making everyone uncomfortable. Okay. But I want to introduce at least two other folks here for you tonight. One of them is my good friend Ashley Dunham. Ashley, say hello to the crowd and tell everybody what you're doing next year.
Hey, everybody. I am Ashley Dunham and I know, I look really young, right? I'm actually running for Supreme Court. So the reason that I'm running is that I'm an IBF mom and my daughter means everything to me. But what do I do right now? I actually sit on the bench in Bessemer, so in the Jefferson County Bessemer Division, and I hear child abuse and neglect cases every day. So I spend all morning protecting children from abuse and neglect. And then in the evenings, I put families together by doing what I call fertility law. So that's surrogacy, egg donation, embryo donation. And the reason that I do that, my passion for that, is because I had to leave my hometown and my state and my family on Thanksgiving Day in 2020 to travel to Oregon to receive adequate health care. So that was where we actually started a family. As far as women who have to leave to save their lives, I can't even get started there. The entire Supreme Court of the state of Alabama is red. And Lady Justice holds the scales of justice for a reason. We need to bring some balance and I'll at least turn the court a little bit purple, if you know me. And you know, that whole soapbox that Wayne was on, if you look at any of my socials, you'll see where I bring the law to everyday people. And I explain to you what it means to you for every single day. So on my social media, I explain, like the Milligan case, where there was voter suppression and how Alabama had Jerry Mandar, the state of Alabama, not once, but twice. Even though SCOTUS told him to, hey, don't do that. They did again. And you know what the current Secretary of State said? Let's see what happens with Louisiana and maybe we'll be able to do it again. So if you want somebody there to actually show what the state of Alabama looks like, that's me. Please, ashleyforalabama.com. And it's spelled A-S-H-L-E-I-G-H-foralabama.com. And if you need a card or anything to look at, I've got some with me today.
There you go. Very good. Well, it just makes clear I don't spell my name in a weird way or anything.
I had no choice in that way.
All right. So one other person I want to introduce to y'all real quick because he's going to be a candidate next year is our friend Drew Washington. Drew.
Good evening. My name is Drew Washington and I want to be a candidate for sheriff of Jefferson County. Sorry, Wayne.
That's all right.
I was a 30-year, nearly 30-year veteran in the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. I started back there in 1995, where I started out actually as a nurse in the county jail, but I had previous police experience. Went on to, switched over to the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and after three years, and after those three years, I went on patrol and then got selected to work undercover narcotics. And I actually worked undercover narcotics for 19 years, which is an extensive amount of time. Those, that entire amount of time, I also worked as an FBI task force agent. So I worked for the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. I was assigned to the Birmingham FBI and that was for like 19 years. You name it, I've done it. I worked homicide, suicide. You know, but I, as an undercover agent, drugs is normally your first passion, right? But sex trafficking became a big thing in Jefferson County and actually across the country. So I spoke to a lot of sex trafficking, I worked a lot of murder for hire, you name it, I've done it. When it comes to Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, they now have a sex trafficking unit. I created that unit. The tactical narcotics unit, I created that unit. The multi-jurisdictional task force, drug task force, I created that, which that didn't, that failed. But I created that as well. I have a passion for helping those who can't help themselves. And I believe that's what law enforcement should be. I don't think law enforcement should be political in any way. I believe politics has no place in law enforcement. It's not about Democrat, Republicans, it's about right or wrong. And that's something that we need to bring back into law enforcement. I believe leadership and accountability is important. That's something that needs to be brought back to the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. I'm one who believes that, you know, law enforcement officers should be able to do their jobs without having to worry about being terminated or suspended for doing the job the correct way. Officers are right now afraid to do their jobs. They're afraid to, and it's costing officers a lot across this country, you know, being afraid to do their jobs. And I'm not saying why they don't hurt people because I think that's where the accountability comes in. We can't, you know, this, this thing that the president's trying to pass right now, that there's immunity for law enforcement officers is ridiculous. Because if you, if you, somebody has these type of biases, then you, the best place for you to hide is the police department, right? So we don't need that. I'm telling you, I've worked all over this country with FBI. I've worked from Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee, Georgia, Texas. They fly me around to do a bunch of dirty work. But I enjoyed it, I loved it, and I believe Jefferson County needs to be brought into the 21st century. And I'm not just talking about equipment, I'm talking about the mindset that officers should have. And we can bring back, I know the current sheriff talks about bridging the gap, but that, that really hasn't been done. Bridging the gap means everybody on the same page, community, and joining the police and the police enjoying the community. And I'm going to get you back down to that, get us back to that. So I really just ask for your support. The primaries in May of 2020.
May 19th.
Yeah, May 19th. And I'm going to get past that and get to General Alex.
All right, very good. Thank you, Drew. You've worked undercover for so long, if you met him, his name was David or Mark or Mike, it's okay, it was just the same guys, all right. Okay, so, so now, so the question that I want to, I want the candidates to be thinking about, you do not have to address this during your five-minute talk, but one thing that everybody in this room should know, Hoover, Alabama is the largest city in the nation that elects all of its city council members at large. The largest city in the nation that does that. Any city larger than us is always done by district, okay? So I would love for the candidates to, if you want to address it during your time, or I may ask you at the end, would you support a city ordinance that would create districts in the city so that you ran by district in the next election in 2029 as opposed to running at large the way we do it? Now, I'll be very, very candid. I think it's ridiculous that everybody has to run citywide now. I think everyone should have to run in a district. Because if you're, if you're, certain districts in this city have not been represented in a very, very long time. You know, some of the members of the city council live in the same neighborhoods, go to the same schools, they're, they're very, you know, very close with each other. And I think it's really best if the entire city has representation in those seven city council seats. So I'm just going to say that, that's my bias, and you don't have to address it if you don't want to, but I did want to say, I think that's something this crowd would like to hear about, okay? Am I right, folks, that y'all would like to hear something about that? Okay, I see a lot of yeses in the room, certainly right. So, those of you who don't know, three of the current members of the city council, place one, Kirk Posey, place two, Sam Sweeney, and place three, John Light, elected not to seek reelection. Places six and seven, Casey Milbrooks and Steve McClain, do not have opposition. So the two of them are on the city council for the next four years automatically without opposition. We're going to start, because of Christian having to go earlier, we're going to start with number four. I don't see Councilwoman Driver did not come in the room, right? Okay, so we will start tonight, and I'll start your five minutes when you come up, with our other candidate for District Four, Donna Mazer, who is, by the way, a former member of the Hoover City Council. Right, go ahead, Donna.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be here. I lived here from New York, in case you can't. That was 42 years ago. I lived in Shelby County, then moved to Hoover in 1985. I have been in my house, same house, way before. My children went to school in Hoover. And I used to have a small business, a ladies' boutique on Warner Road. In 2000, I was asked, well, actually, 1999, I was asked to run for the Hoover City Council. Before that, I was on the beautification board for almost eight years. I was the first one who ever served the president two years in a row. Well, I should say eight years, for eight years. I love Hoover. It has been wonderful to my family and I. I was asked in 1999 to run for Hoover City Council, which I did. And I'm honored to say that I was elected. When I was on the Hoover City Council, there was not a person, a resident of Hoover, who did, who did not come before the council to ask a question and they were answered at that time. If the council didn't know the answer, we would ask one of the department heads to be at every meeting so that if we couldn't answer them, we would call up a department head to answer the question. Today, unfortunately, if you come up to ask a question in the city of Hoover, you are ignored. And I know because I've been on that side. The council looks at you like, who is this person? I want to bring that back, who the residents deserve. You don't work for the council, the council works for you. Another thing is the absolute abuse of taxpayers' money. And I say that so that everyone in this room who lives in the city of Hoover, you have no idea what's, what your money is going for. We own a building in River Chase that we are paying $17 million of your money over the next 10 years that no one is in. We pay for everything, the maintenance, the lights, the, everything. People, that's your money. And no one has asked any questions about it. No one has spoken about it. We don't know anything until after the fact. I want to bring transparency back to the citizens of Hoover. They deserve it. They put me there in 2000. I believe my council that I was on was one of the best transparent councils that there was. I was on the board when this library was expanded. We also brought in the Ross Bridge and the Robert Trent Jones golf course, the Public Safety Center, the RV Park at the Met, which has kept the SEC here for over 20 years. I'm proud of that. I'm going to ask for your vote. Christian was a very hard act to follow. But we are in the same, we are in the same position, place four. So I would like to ask for your vote. And if you have any questions, feel free and I will answer them.
All right, you got 20 seconds, Donna, sir.
I have 20 seconds.
So let's, let's not do your question, we'll just, we'll, we'll, you have one question?
Is that expensive building vacant?
It's vacant, there is no one in it. There is no one in it. It's part of this river. There's no one in it. We are paying $17 million of your money to a building for the next 10 years and no one is in it.
Wow. All right, thank you, Donna. Very good. I'll give you a one-minute warning when you got one minute to go. So, all right, so now we will go to place one. We have, really, tonight, having both candidates for this place here. So, so gosh, really nice to have both of you here and we'll start, I'm just doing it in the order I wrote down, which was alphabetical. And so for place one, Tenvir Patel, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for having me here. And thank you all for coming here tonight. So good evening, Hoover. Look around you. We are in the library. This is where education meets ambition. This is not just a library, it is a launchpad. And it is a launchpad. So what I want to talk to you today about, that I am really honored that I am standing here in front of Hoover, who understands that when education thrives, business booms. When business booms, education thrives. Isn't that true? Now, as you all know, that Hoover is in education placed on the top five. And that's excellent. But excellence is not enough. Excellence is a starting point, it is not a destination. We need schools. We need schools that's going to teach our kids coding and character. We need schools that's going to build spirit and skills. We need schools where our children are going to learn, not only just to be, so that we prepare them for the jobs of today, but we are preparing them for the careers of tomorrow. Those are the type of schools where we need to go. In today's AI age and with all the global competition, we need to do more. Now, as we are doing the schools, as you know, as we build great schools, we are building, what are we doing? Our kids, when they graduate, they are just not going to look for opportunities. They will create opportunities. They are not just going to go find a job in a company, they are going to create businesses. And when we create businesses, that's my next thing, is business that booms. Business that booms. Today, we have 4,500 businesses employing 50,000 people in a $2.5 billion economy. But we need to do more. This is not enough, we need to do more. We need, when others say that there is obstacles, there are, there is, I see, what I see is I see opportunities. And that's what we see, is opportunities. When others say no, we say, why not? We need to cut the red tape. When we cut the red tape, and we will cut the red tape, then businesses have the freedom to grow. Now, the businesses and the education, they are not two separate things. They are one journey to prosperity. That's what it is. And collaborating the businesses and the education is very, very important. And it is, they are linked. They are linked. When we create good students, good students create great businesses. Good, great businesses, what do they do? They fund great schools. So they are together. And that's my two most things to my heart, is great schools and businesses that boom. Now, let me tell you a little bit about that not only just the schools are important, but when you are coming on 26 August, what are we doing? We are not casting just to vote. We are casting a vision, a vision better for our children and the future generations to come. That's what we're doing. And with all of this, transparency is very important. Because if you don't know anything about the, what's going on in the city, it's not good. But the way transparency is there for agents, all governments are talking about transparency. But do they know how to do it? Because every couple of years, again, we are talking about transparency. I want to fix in a way transparency that is permanent, it is government-backed, AI transparency. And because, why, why me? Because I've been a CEO of a global tech company and ran a couple of many businesses successfully. I know how to take that. I know how to execute on those visions. That's what I am, I am best at. So all I would ask for you today is to cast your vote. I'm seeking your vote. Please vote for Tenvir Patel, place one.
Well done, Tenvir. So her opponent and her only other opponent is going to be one of these two folks, Mr. Robin Schultz. Come on up.
Thank you, Wayne. My name is Robin Schultz. I live in the Bluff Park community. I've lived in Hoover for 37 years. Wayne and I have a few things in common. I voted in 1980 for the first time. Register. I am, I grew up in Palm Beach County, Florida, with the hanging tabs is what I voted on. So a couple of things that you're going to hear a lot, one word you're going to hear a lot tonight. The word is transparency, okay? A lot of candidates are going to talk the talk about transparency. I walk the block. In 2022, the city of Hoover had recorded and streamed all the meetings, of the council meetings, for a number of years since 2017. In 2022, a unilateral decision was made by the council president to remove all of the meetings. They deleted every single one of the meetings off of the YouTube channel. They deleted every one of the work session meetings, everything was deleted. This left a huge void because you deserve to see what's going on in the council. Not everybody can make a council meeting. Especially if you live in Greystone, that's a long drive, okay? It's a long drive to make it to a council meeting. Well, I'm in the IT business and nothing that is on the internet is ever really gone. So I was able to find every one of the deleted videos. I downloaded every one of the deleted videos. I then uploaded it to my new channel called The Hoover Channel. And then I began to record the meetings and in 2023, we began to livestream the meetings. Every single meeting from 2017 is back up and we owned it, not the city. Okay, that way you can see it whenever you want to. The, the, I want to address Wayne's, to Wayne's question because I think it's a really good question, is should Hoover district, okay? I would disagree with you. And I'll tell you why I disagree with you. Hoover is 50 square miles. We are, have a number of communities. And breaking those communities into districts is going to be kind of a difficult thing. One of the cool things I think about being a council member is that you do get to represent everybody, okay? Everybody votes for everybody and you get to represent everybody. If you live in Greystone and you have a problem, you don't have to call one person, you can call any of them. And they can attempt to solve your problem. The same goes for Bluff Park, Ross Bridge, Trace Crossings, every single community that we have. So I would say that the way that we have it right now is good. I was not aware, and I'm glad to learn, that we are the largest city that is not district. That is really cool. Now, Wayne brought up one other thing that is crucial. Earlier today, I learned that we have 72,000 registered voters in the city of Hoover. 72,000. Of those, we have less than 10%, oh, we have little over 10% that show up to vote. That means we got about 85% that don't, that sit at home. We can't have that, okay? We can't have that. In 2020 and in 2016, we had 13,000 people show up to vote. We need to bring that number up. It's up to you, okay? Up to you to bring the people out. Again, you're going to hear transparency a lot. Again, you're going to hear a lot of talk. We went ahead and implemented it. We plan on raising it one level when, if we get elected. Number one, the minutes are going to be very, very, will be, go back to where they were before. Right now, the minutes are Robin Schultz spoke, but not the topic. We're going to talk about the topic, okay? The second thing that we're going to bring back is we're going to make sure that, that all of the transcripts are available. We want to put things online. Freedom of Information Act shouldn't be an act of Congress. It should be something where you submit the request and in a reasonable period of time, and I consider a week to 10 days to be reasonable. And you don't have to pay for it. Let's make sure that we get the information that you all deserve. My name is Robin Schultz. I'm running for Hoover City Council, place one. I hope to get your vote. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Just to prove to all the Republicans who showed up tonight, the Democrats are okay with disagreeing with people and we're still normal. We don't have horns, we don't have tails, okay? We're all, we're all just regular folks. I mean, okay, so, so yeah, I, you know, it's perfectly fine for people to have different views about the way they feel. Now, before I proceed to Council Seat Two, I want to make sure that there's not any candidates who came in that haven't checked in with me. Because I've only got one of the four candidates and since the other three didn't show up, I'm not going to read their names. So, so, wait, what's that?
Gene Smith.
Oh, Gene Smith is here. Well, hey, since he say hi. Oh, now, there he is.
I've never received a formal invitation.
Well, yeah, you know, there didn't have to be a formal invitation. Yeah, and Lake, so if there's you who came in, Lake, I'm not in charge, I'm just up here. So, so I used to be in charge. But no, Gene, you're here, yeah, you, you want to talk?
I don't mind.
Okay, you have, all right, very good. But you'll give me a second because we're in alphabetical order. So I won't read the names of the two people who didn't show up. How about that? Okay, so, so we have two of our four candidates. You have five minutes and I'll give you a one-minute warning, but we'll start right here on the front row. Koflin Johnson. All right, Koflin, go ahead.
Very nice. Thank you, God. Sorry about that. Thank you, God, for having me. Sorry, still a little bit hoarse. Wasn't expecting that. But anyway, my name is Koflin Johnson and I'm just going to give you a few things about me and then I'll move on into my platform and if I have time left, then I'll open up the floor for questions. But just a little bit about me, my name is Koflin Johnson. I'm a 15-year Hoover resident and I'm 23 years old. I'm a product of Hoover. I went to Spain Park High School and after that, I went to the University of Alabama. Now, as far as my platform goes, I'm here because I look to represent a demographic under the age of 30. I understand that we have, you know. Hold on, hold on, give me a, we've got seven seats of council members. We've got seven seats of council members and none of them are under the age of 30. My generation, what we're talking about is 40 years of earning and spending potential. That's, that's putting kids into the education system, new kids into the education system, new money into the economy. What we're talking about is people buying houses. We're talking about people selling houses. Who are you going to be selling the houses to? So why doesn't, why, why isn't it that we don't have anybody under the age of 30 on the council? That's what I'm here for. I am Gen Z representation and I look to push the economy forward with my generation. I know what they want. There's a difference in generation between what we consider fun and entertainment versus what a different generation might, might enter fun and entertainment. People are headed towards fixed income or retirement. If you want to get up and move to Margarita Village and sell your house, who are you going to be selling to? It's my generation, which is why it's so important. This is my call to action. And so what you're going to hear a lot about is experience. Well, what type of experience do you have? And, and you don't have the experience in, in, in being a council. It's going to take you a long time. That's an old regime. This is a new generation. I'm a fast learner. This is my call to action. So when I think about experience, I draw, I draw a thin line between what experiences, what experience exists versus the experience that I have. The experience that I have is being a part of my generation uniquely, uniquely a part of my generation. I know what my people want and I know where times are headed in terms of innovation. Now with that, I've been tackling different things in the community. I bring modern solutions to current issues such as stormwater management and commercial blight, as well as finding new ways to fund the education system. I've been meeting with members of the community for weeks now. I started my campaign April twenty-ninth. I've gone to members, members of the community in Russell Woods, Green Valley. I've been in Greystone. And, and, and for all of these things, in this very library, I held a stormwater town hall where I had members of the community come speak and listen and hear about the types of issues that have been taking over the city of Hoover. You know, at some point for me, it's less of a political thing. It's more of human decency to not allow our citizens to be overlooked in their issues, be cut off from speaking at the city council meetings, be completely ignored by the city. And, and for me, this is the city that I grew up in. I, I, I hold it dear to my heart because like I said, I'm a product of Hoover. Been here my whole life. So I have really no negative experience with the city of Hoover. But it's my call to action and it's my purpose to move the city forward because I'm losing my friends to trendier cities like, let's say Nashville or Huntsville. But realistically, there is nothing about the city of Hoover that cannot offer those same amenities. We have the best resources. We have the best education system. And, and there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to compete. So, um, you know, I, I hope that my message resonates with you because being young doesn't mean being unprepared. Being young, in my case, is being unafraid of challenging the status quo. So if that resonates with you, I hope to earn your vote on August twenty-sixth. Please vote for Kovalin Johnson. Thank you.
Good job, Kovalin. Gene, I'm sorry we didn't get an official invitation. We're, we're very informal around here. Diane probably just missed, missed out on that one. So no problem at all, but you come on up. And so, so Gene, it's good to have you here. And this is, y'all, for everyone who doesn't know, this is Mr. Gene Smith. And Gene, go right ahead and say hello to everybody. All right, thanks for being here. All right.
I'm Gene Smith. I moved to what became Hoover when I was six years old. It's been a few weeks ago. I've lived in the city for over fifty-five years. I, I moved here before there was a city. My parents signed the original petition to form the township of four hundred plus residents. I, as a scout, built the original Avenue of Flags for my Eagle project along with three other young men. I became an Explorer post scout with the fire department, which led to a seventeen-and-a-half-year career with the fire department, where I retired at the rank of captain. I turned down chief's position because they wanted me to go on forty hours. My family was pushing me to help with the family business, which I eventually left to take care of family obligations. I found an appointment in the planning zoning commission in two thousand and four. I was elected to the city council. In two thousand and sixteen, my colleagues selected me to be president of the city council. I represent the entire city. I'm not looking to represent one generation. I want to represent all of you. I have represented all of you in the past and I want to do it again. I've never missed a communication. I've never, I've turned a phone call. I've never given bad information to anyone. I don't know that I've ever given any bad information. I need that cabbie high in case somebody finds it. Robin Fountain. Place two is a spot where I held before. Since when has decided not to seek the election? And that's why I want to go back to place two. I'm not going to be able to go back and try to get the capital. I think there are other people that, that if they're elected, have the experience to, to, to have earned the capital. But there's an opportunity that there's going to be a lot of new faces, a lot of new faces. The only two guaranteed, one is beginning his third term and one's beginning his second term. And even they have things to learn. And I think that I can help mentor them. I know everything, though. But I also, I have out there a lot of people. I own a business here in Hoover. I've signed both sides of the check. I can sign the back of the check, but I also sign more of the checks on the front. I know what it's like to be a business owner these days. I know what it's like to be a business owner here in Hoover. I opened our business in September of two thousand and nine. Been here for quite a while. I don't want to be around for about the end of time. I really think that I have some great value to bring back to the city. I don't think that I have finished providing things for the city. The city's been a big part of my life and it's been a big part of my life. And with that, I certainly hope and would ask to earn your vote on August the sixth.
All right. Well, wasn't it? All right, very good. So that's all for place two unless somebody else came in. So now we will be going to place three. We have two, three candidates for place three here. And we'll start over here with Liz Lane. All right, Liz, come on up.
Hey, guys. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I'm Liz Lane and I'm running for Hoover City Council in place three. And Wayne, just to get your question out of the way first, I do believe that we should be districted. We are the largest city to not be districted. And I think if you're going to build true communities, you need to have people that understand their communities. And I'll give it to my opponent, actually, Ashley Lovelior in Greystone, right? And I do think that area is and has always been underrepresented, so maybe that. I am an artist and I think artists have also been underrepresented in politics. I'm a mom and we have also been underrepresented and I'm a small business owner. And I am running for Hoover City Council because regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, we all know that a woman has never been elected president. And I have two little girls. They're seven and nine. And after this past election, I had to look at them and tell them that Harris had lost and Trump had won. And I believe, I, I know that they are old enough to start to internalize what that means. And I wanted to challenge the narrative that women cannot be in leadership in our own house. And I wanted to put my money where my mouth was and walk the walk and talk the talk and become deeply involved as an advocate for our community. So here I am and, you know, the elections are August twenty-sixth. These are municipal elections. And what I ask of everyone here tonight is to put the same energy in these municipal elections as you would a presidential election. Because we can be so upset about what's happening in Washington. And we can, we should speak out loud about what is happening in Gaza and all over the world and about all the tragedies that are going on. But unless we start paying attention to what's happening in our own front yards, we're going to lose our communities too. So I'm just asking everyone here tonight, find the candidates that you like. Find the candidate that give you a little hope for a seed, a start, that, that represent empathy and action. So that, that's my call to you guys. And with that, all I have to say are all politics are local. It starts here and it starts with you and it starts with a candidate on city council. Hoover is a great city for now, for some people. But all politics are local and I'm worried about my neighbors being deported, being racially profiled. I saw over eight hundred kids registered at a free school supply drive this weekend. I talked with parents and a lot, a thing that came up a lot was food insecurity and it's only getting worse. All politics are local and SNAP funding is being slashed. Alabama could shoulder up to seventy-five percent of the funding that is lost. And we're going to have to cover those grocery bills. That's real. This is local and legislative bodies must be clear about the priority that feeding our families is. All politics are local and this is something that I care so deeply about. Our city has seventeen million dollars of your taxpayer money sitting for an art center. Now, the arts saved me. The arts decreases crime, it increases property value, it brings communities together. And I want to see this, I want to see this art center come into fruition. This is one of my top goals. If I'm elected as a city council member, I will make sure that we get our art center because in talking to so many people, door knocking, what I'm hearing from you guys is that your communities are shrinking and we need more community spaces, more third places to meet, to understand each other. Flooding is ripping through communities throughout the United States. But again, I can't say it enough, all politics are local. And right here in Hoover, because of poor environmental planning, we have already lost infrastructure, homes and lives. We need leaders that will hold our developers accountable because we should be accountable to you. So y'all, between now and August twenty-sixth, please support the, the candidates that you believe in. Door knock, vote, put up our yard signs, remind your neighbors to vote. Mobilize the people, mobilize for the people that are working to make the neighborhoods a little bit better. I'm running for seat three. I'm asking for your vote. I will fight every day so that my little girls can, so can continue to have choices.
In the meeting today with Brian Lyman, who's the editor of the Alabama Reflector, who has spoken lunchtime today. And he pointed out, oops, I just want to follow up some list. State Alabama is going to lose forty million dollars in SNAP funding in two thousand and twenty-six and a hundred and seventy-five million in two thousand and twenty-seven, based on the bill.
But Katie Britt brought.
Yeah, there you go, man. All right, so place three. All right, we have, we have three candidates in place three. Two of them are here. By the way, y'all, we have nine of fifteen contested candidates here. Well, it's great job by Hoover to him. All right, thank you all. So the second person is here for, for place three is Ashley Lovell. Ashley, come on up.
Hey, everybody. Thank you, guys, for inviting me here tonight. Quick question before I get started. Have you guys ever been in a situation where you have felt so compelled to take action that even though you may not have the history of being in that field, that you take action because you're compelled? And that's where I found myself. So I was facing a development issue over on my side of town. I live on the east side of Hoover. And I'm a mom of two. I'm from Hoover originally. I'll tell you more about myself in just a minute. But I was compelled to take action to stand up for my community. And that's really what got me here. So I'm not a career politician. I like to solve problems. I, listening is one of my favorite things to do because I like to hear the concerns of anyone I'm speaking with, especially residents of Hoover. So a little bit about me is I grew up in Hoover. I moved to Hoover in nineteen ninety-nine. I went to Rocky Ridge Elementary School, Berry Middle, or Rocky Ridge Elementary, Berry Middle School and Spain Park High School. So I love that Kovalin and I, we got that jag. I both play basketball, so I'm tall, he's tall, and you know, it's a much smaller space here, right? So as far as my background, I think I do have a unique perspective of Hoover because I grew up here. I'm a product of the Hoover City Schools. I understand how important they are. They're a launchpad into life. And I feel like that I was definitely prepared. I went to Birmingham Southern College and I majored in biology and minored in business. And I played golf at Birmingham Southern. So do you have any golf fans? Pick me up later. But then I moved away because I thought there were better things. I thought there were better places to live. I took a job with a company in Florida and I had the privilege of traveling to forty-nine of our states here in the U.S. And it was eye-opening because I realized where I grew up was the best. I love Hoover. So then, you know, life progresses and I have two children. And I started asking the questions that many of us have probably asked, which is, where do I want to raise my kids? And how do I want them to have their start in life? And you know what I thought? Hoover, Alabama. So we moved our family from Florida to Hoover on purpose. I came back to Hoover because I loved Hoover. So, you know, to get back to what I previously said, I'm not that, I'm not a career politician, but I was impelled to take action for my community. And, and so to speak about getting voter turnout. My side of town, historically the east side, all of the other polling locations are double the voting. Double. So half of my journey has been to raise awareness, to get people to come to the council meetings and to realize how local politics impact everyday life. So it's been, it's been several journeys, but I'm thankful to be on this journey. So I hope to earn your vote on August twenty-sixth. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer those. I've got my groceries here. One last quick moment, or fact about me is that I announced that I was running for place three back on January twenty-seventh. And I specifically chose place three because that was city council president John Lina's seat. And in the course of dealing with this development issue, I put together a petition. They got almost three thousand signatures. I took it to the city council president. What do you guys think he did?
Heard what?
He didn't even call me back. And I was like, how do three thousand signatures on something not matter to you? And so I said, I've got to take it to the top. I've got to change it from the top. And so that's why I chose place three. So I'm passionate about this city. I got to back it down because I'm about to jump out. I hope to earn your vote. Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Actually, all I can say about that is my wife is going to want you to talk to our children because I have three Hoover Buccaneers who live in New York, D.C. and Nashville. All right. So we have one more candidate and we're going to take a few questions. So folks, unless there's somebody came in that did not check in with me. Our last candidate is for place five. And that's going to be Mr. Steve Lawrence. Steve, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mike. There's a lot of different topics that I could really talk about. And let me introduce myself first. My name's Steve Lawrence. My family moved to Hoover in nineteen seventy-four. I was telling everyone I was six years old and I said that in front of my mom and she corrected me. I was four years old. Thought I knew math, but anyways. Lived most of my life in Hoover. Met my wife in the same neighborhood. We've been married for twenty-five years. We've got three kids. My son went to graduate at Hoover High School. He goes to Auburn. His twin sister goes to South Alabama, then I have a junior that's in Hoover High School. And so this year, I really want to spend time to talk about, since we only have five minutes, is really our school system. For most of you, you may not even realize this, but before two thousand and sixteen, the Hoover City Council said all school resource officers should split fifty-fifty in funding between the police department as well as the school district. The police department, the city of Hoover, agreed to cover a hundred percent of the costs before we had the two thousand and sixteen election, which brought in a lot of different, a change into our city. Since that time, they raised it from two and a half million to five million. And it's been five million for funding this entire time for, for going on nine years now. Well, school costs have gone up. Enrollment's been relatively flat. But I wanted to sit down and figure out, you know, keep hearing the schools need more funding. So I went and met with the superintendent. I met with three board of education members. I met with a member of the BTSO as well as some teachers to find out what, what do we need school funding for? Because I'm looking at the financials, they look pretty good. Everything's going great. And I love the superintendent because he was very direct to me. And he said, you know, we've got nine million dollars of the COVID money that's going away. And he said, in the past, and everyone knows that in the past, And he said, in the past, and everyone knows that in the past year, what's happened in our school district is all the kids have improved the test scores. It's amazing. I don't think I've ever seen it in my history of living in Hoover where every person is literally doing much better than the year before. A lot of that is because of the COVID money, because they hired extra tutors. There's so many kids who have been left behind because they stayed at home. They, they weren't learning during COVID and they were just playing video games and doing this. And so we have a bunch of kids that are behind. And those special teachers, tutors, you name it, mental health experts or whatever, that all have been a huge part of helping those kids, that funding is drying up. So they need more money for the schools. And so I heard that from him and then I talked to a board, a board member who is really good with facilities. And what he was saying is, you know, Hoover High School's thirty-one years old. A lot of these school buildings are really old. And there's maintenance issues, there's capital improvements that have to be made. And we can't keep band-aiding the process. And there's, and you talk to the teachers and their concern is the restrooms smell awful. And there's things that need to be upgraded. And I just went up taking all that in and I'm listening to folks. I felt like what we need to do is because the city has wasted a lot of money, if y'all heard our river walk a little bit a while ago. Let's take a half penny that already exists, not raise taxes, but allocate that money to Hoover City Schools. And we can cut our spending elsewhere and we can watch our stuff, but we need to take that money and give it to the school district because we need to keep that funding. And Jefferson County, I don't know if you saw this today, I think they announced that they're gonna pay for all the food for all the kids. Like there's not gonna be a food charge for them. Well, the half penny, we may be able to do some of that Hoover and pick up more, more than lunch, you know, the lunches and stuff for the students. But the biggest thing is the school fees. How many parents do you know out there that struggle? Every time when they're about to start the school year, they get hammered with two, three hundred, four hundred dollars with a school fee. Depending on how many kids you have in the classroom. Take some of that money, when it, take some of that money, that half penny, and let's pay for the school fees so the kids don't have to do it, the parents don't have to come out of pocket. It would be huge. So that's really something that's near and dear to my heart. My wife is on the Hoover City School Foundation. She just rolled off. She's been doing corporate, the treasurer for, I think it was a decade. So if you are for pro-school funding, please vote Steve Lawrence, place five. And I thank you for your time.
Alright, if I can say to all the candidates, well done. Good job by all of you. Thank you all for being here. And if you all wouldn't mind coming back up to the front and our folks may have a few questions for y'all to ask. Would all the candidates mind coming back up here? Just stand here behind the table and, and we can ask. You can ask it for the folks in the audience. You can ask a question with a specific candidate or you can ask a general question. We'll get the answer from all of them. Does anybody have a question they'd like to ask? Yes, Ashley with the E-I-G-H.
Sorry. So the city council appoints the library board and the school board. What qualities would you be looking for in a school board or library board member to apply?
Alright, let's just start, we'll just start down the end. Liz.
Alright, for a school board, I definitely would be looking for candidates that are pro-education, that believe that books are not the problem. I would be looking for candidates. I, I mean, with the internet, I don't really understand. And on the library board, I think it's kind of the same thing. We need to let the big people in the libraries and on the boards do their job, do what they're supposed to do for the children and adults that use levers. And then on the school board, I think that women should definitely, actually, let me back up. My grandmother was actually in my family, the first woman that was ever elected to the school board in upstate New York in her little town. And she ran on lowering taxes, but that was not her goal at all. And her church got very mad at her when they found out that's not what she was gonna do. She put a special education teacher in. And I am, I'm actually dyslexic and one of my children has dyslexia and ADHD. And I am a strong proponent of people that will make education inclusive for all of our kids. And I think that a school board can really have a lot of ground there.
Okay, very good. Next, Liz. So instead of, instead of having everyone address the same question, Liz answer that question. We'll give the next question down the line. But I will, but I will open it up to anyone who would like to add anything or disagree with Liz or wanna say anything about, about, yes, Tamper, we'll go with you.
You had a question.
So let's stick with the one that Ashley asked first and then we'll go to the next.
Okay, so I think that, you know, I mean, if I know that Hoover, my, two of my children went to Hoover's school system. I have two children and both went to Hoover's school system. Hoover, in Hoover's school systems, eighty-eight languages are spoken. So it is got so much of culture in there. Now, I would say that, you know, I would like to see a person who is, who understands that yes, education is important, teaching every child is important, no matter what their background in the culture is. And I would like to listen to them and understand what are the funds that are needed to help them accelerate that? What are their challenges? Somebody who understands not only about this, but also the business side of it, what it requires to operate. Because I think both those qualities are important to make it successful.
Very good. So any candidates who haven't spoken to this yet, if you want, yes, go ahead. Robert.
One thing that I wanna bring up is in two thousand and seven, up to two thousand and seven, what we had for school board members was more of a cronyism type environment. It's not what you knew, but who you knew and as, who was appointed to the board. In two thousand and eight, I got together with then-council member Gene Smith and we came up with a method of interviewing council members, a background check, I'm sorry, board members, a background check of board members, a public interview of board members so that everybody could see it and an understanding of what the roles of a school board member are. And that is something that has stayed throughout the years. I happen to have applied for the school board and, and understand how important the school board is. And what is fascinating to me is people talk about the schools, but they've never been to a school board meeting. How many people here have been to a school board meeting? How many people have participated with school board members? They're the ones that actually set the policies. Superintendent makes recommendations to school board members, set the policies and they approve it. So that is a very important thing is to understand who is appointed is somebody that understands the school system.
Alright, Steve, you said you wanna say something real quick?
Yeah, just something real quick. Great answers. One thing I would add is I think every person surrounding a school board needs to be a parent or a child in the school district.
Good, alright. So before we have not responded yet, would you like to, she asked about school board and library board. Would you like to take on the library board issue? If you don't, that's okay. Just tell me that.
One thing I'd like to say, and it's not just the library boards, the parking wreck. Those boards are charged with hiring the, the head librarian here. It's not the council, it's not the mayor's, it is the library board. Responsible.
Let me just, let me just say one thing. If you're criminalizing librarians, you're wrong. You're on the wrong side of history. I'm just gonna say that, okay? So I'll just, I'll just throw that out there. I mean, I'm, I'm, listen, I'm not directing that at any one of you. I'm just saying in general, if you're trying to make a librarian a criminal, you're on the wrong side of history. Okay, next question. Did somebody else have a question?
Yes, I did.
Yes, over there.
I am new to voting in Hoover.
Hey, buddy, how you doing?
Yeah, hey, come back. Yeah, I'm new to voting in Hoover. I've only lived here for three years since July twenty twenty-two. So I'm unsure of how it works exactly. I do know, I found out where my polling place is. I'm in place nine. I'm at the River Chase Church of Christ. But I don't know. Am I only voting for place nine candidates?
There are no place nine. You're gonna vote from one through five because six and seven were unopposed. So they've already been reelected.
And the mayor.
Yes, that's right. So. So, so, so what ask, if anyone who didn't address my question about the district thing, who would like to address that now? Would anyone like to take that on? I know, I know Robert addressed it, Liz addressed it. Yes, Ashley, yeah, Ashley, go with the time.
Okay, very good. So I mentioned earlier that the east side is historically non-turning out for votes as much, or for voting as much. And I, I believe that even coming from that perspective on that side of town, I think it's important that every council person represents all of Hoover. Because the decisions that are made on one side impact the decisions on the other side. And so I think when there is the at-large elections, it forces people to work together to think about the problems as a whole. And maybe not just the area that they're representing.
Has there ever been a council person from Greystone?
Yes, so back in twenty sixteen, back in 2013, yeah. But it's, yeah, so I'm hopeful because Coquelin's on the east side too. And so this is like the first time really two east side candidates have been in the race. So we're excited because we're like, let's stir up the community and vote for, come out voting.
Good job.
I basically agree with Ashley. Being on the council before, there was only five of us on the council. So we took care of the whole city. At that time, it was forty-four square miles. And we did, I did a grassroots campaign. It wasn't like this. Six nights a week, I was at somebody else's house throughout the whole city. But I learned a lot. And I feel that having at-large, you make people work together. You don't have them, well, I live in Locksaw, this is what I want for Locksaw. Forget about Greystone, they don't count. When you have a council that works together, I think you get more accomplished and everyone will get what they want.
Okay, not to be controversial, but, but I, but I did notice that everyone who's been in favor of the at-large, or white people, okay? So I would love to hear from Coquelin and Tamper as to what, because, I mean, to my, to my way of thinking, the way, I'm just gonna state it bluntly. The Voting Rights Act hates that, okay? If you look at the Voting Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act makes it very clear that certain communities, particularly communities of color, should have representation, okay? I'm, I'm, I'm saying, let me finish my point, okay? And that's what, that's why Hoover is the large city. If Hoover got sued for a Voting Rights Act today, they would lose. There's no question in my mind. Hoover would get hammered in a Voting Rights Act case. So, so, I'd say, okay, Robert disagrees with this.
I disagree for one reason.
Okay.
We're a diverse community. We have, we have different races and cultures throughout. My, my neighbor on one side is Hispanic, my neighbor on the other side is black. We do not have a black section or a white section or things like that. That's why I, I disagree that we would lose.
Okay, alright. Coquelin, what do you think?
So I'm, I'm, I'm really big on, on, on sense of community. And so when you think about what, what a council would be disjointed by representing certain districts. Currently, the current administration is not very cohesive on the way that they make decisions as it is. And so the idea that we separate ourselves by location, I feel like that would only make it worse as a disjointed community. And so I'm a proponent of teamwork and, you know, you mentioned like the basketball and all the things that, that, that brought me to here. But I think, I think that, that at-large elections should remain.
Okay, Tamper, then she, okay, Tamper, go ahead.
I do think that it's not only just the at-large is definitely what I would like. But I also feel that it should not be just, we are focusing just on the areas or the place. We need to have representation from all these different areas. But we also need to have representation of different skills. Because you need business people on the council, so you can make, need people from the law expertise that can be very good to think. So our expertise of the council members are extremely important to make good decisions. Because you cannot be on the council and rely on, oh, you know, the engineer is going to say something or they, whatever they said, we made it because we did have enough information and that's why we made it. Because in couple of years, again, there'll be another group of people coming and saying, oh, what they did is very wrong. We should do it like this. So we, I feel like it not only just these areas, it needs skill sets of different council members to bring, to make good decisions.
Very sweet perspective. I will, I will point out to folks who poo-pooed by saying that if Hoover loses that case, Alabama, dang sure thought they won that case two years ago too, didn't they, on what happened? Gene, go ahead.
One of the reasons, probably the main reason that I enjoy and like having at-large elections is, is not having the court money that goes along with having those districts. Over a four-year period, you're gonna lose hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to council members that have discretionary money that allow them to go back to their district in order to get, try to get reelected. And to me, that's, that's wasteful. Those, those monies could be put to better use.
Okay, well, there you go. So looks like I'm in the vast minority. I don't know. We got plenty of time for one more question from the crowd. If anybody has one more thing they would like to have answered here. So yes, go ahead.
I don't know if anybody said the worst thing they, and what's the, the, the biggest, what's the worst thing about Hoover that would make it, if you solve that problem, it would make it a better place?
There you go, there you go, right, let's see, let's start, let's start with Coquelin and then I'll let everybody answer this. Alright, we'll be down by a third.
So, so right now, I'm, I'm thinking that the, the, the priority issue with Hoover is the commercial blight. We've got a lot of empty storefronts as far as, you know, the Patton Creek area or even you, you think about the, the River Trace Galleria, it's not necessarily an empty storefront, but it's, it's, you know, in the next ten years, we might be looking at strong dilapidation. And so when I think about what goes into the improvement of Hoover, right now, we, we, you know, I, I, as Hooverites, as the community of Hoover, Hoover is the best place ever and we, and we know that. But, but from a different perspective, we're great and we're no, and we know that we're great, but it's gonna take more than sitting back knowing that we're great to attract businesses here. It's gonna have to take creative marketing to go to these business, businesses personally and say, hey, this is why Hoover will be great for your business. This is why you need to come to Hoover and, and, and be a part of our, our, our community. This is why the, the consumers will love you. And so it, it, it just goes back to the amenities and the resources that Hoover boasts. But if we don't market ourselves in the correct sense, then we're going to miss out on all of the potential economy or, or.
Alright, Liz. So Steve, Sam, Liz, and then, and then Ashley. Alright, Steve?
Yeah, I just, I mean, really, just what Coquelin said. I mean, you drop around, you see businesses and the reality is we have an antiquated ordinance, ordinance that costs businesses money. So if they wanna come to Hoover and they open up, it's gonna cost you more money, which is why the state is kicking our butt. Helen, Birmingham, you go on the east side and you, literally two blocks over, there's not a single vacancy. But on the Hoover side, there's tons of vacancies. So, so how is it that everyone around us is beating us economically and we're sitting here with businesses? And the thing that's so frustrating to me is what's happening in the development world now is mixed-use developments. What's changing? Go to cities all around the southeast. And things have evolved because people aren't going into an office building anymore. They're working from home. They wanna have a condo and have a coffee shop down below where they can walk down and have coffee and do the watercooler, watercooler talk. So I'll just wrap it up by saying, there's so many areas of Hoover that if we were to look at developing those with mixed-use developments, it would help revitalize those areas and I think would also attract younger people into our city.
Yeah, for sure. Alright, Liz and then Ashley.
Okay, so. So two things, I think if we do decrease the unused space in Hoover, we're really smart about development, that will increase our sales and use tax, our revenues, we'll be able to have more money to deal with what I think is the biggest issue in Hoover, which is our environmental, lack of environmental care. I got into this when I was, well, I started paying attention when I was twelve years old during the Bush four election because I cared about the rainforest. And I am deeply disturbed by our lack of responsibility when it comes to caring for the Kahaba River, but also the loss of life that we will face in a changing climate as our floodplains are changing. Hoover already has flooding issues and I am deeply troubled by the lack of concern for what floodwater will do. We have seen what it can do in other communities and I think unless we take this issue head-on, all of this won't matter.
Okay, Ashley, you've been done.
So there's a lot of, I believe, symptoms that lead to the greater, more overarching theme, which is smart development and thoughtful development. So there are different groups of people that passionately come to every city council meeting to talk about the issues that their community is facing. And a lot of these common issues revolve around smart development. So the stormwater issue, you know, what type of, of, of things are being built? So the stormwater issue, you know, what type of, of, of things are being built? Are the ordinances, have they been updated? What are they, what's their stormwater plan? What's the pipe sizing, all that stuff? As far as, you know, infrastructure and that type of thing. One thing that's very important to me, and I'm gonna give my mom a shout out in the back, she's right back there. She's a fierce evening, but I believe that aging in place is really important, and it's something I'm passionate about. My mom still lives in the house that I grew up in. And the thing about Hoover is that we need to have housing options for what the population needs right now, not what a developer wants to put in. And so that, that feeds right into that. I want a Hoover resident to be able to move into Hoover as a young person, be able to then have a family, and then age, and have a well-rounded ability to be able to, to enjoy Hoover. So it all revolves around smart development.
Okay, very good. Donna.
I just want to say.
Is that your favorite candidate?
I'm talking to individuals about stormwater.
We'll, we'll give you just a minute, Donna's gonna answer a question, and we'll get to you in a second there. Go ahead, Donna.
When I was on the council, we did Patton Creek. It was beautiful. It was full of, it, it had everything that you could want. As these new developments came in, they authored the people in Patton Creek to move to the new developments. Patton Creek is almost empty now, but look how many went to Stadium Trace. They went down to the new, the Tzatziki's, the Steakhouse. They all moved out of Patton Creek because they were given an incentive to move to these new shopping centers. And we don't really have anyone in the city anymore to try and get this. At one time, we had Virginia Williams, who came from Birmingham, and she did a remarkable job bringing businesses to the city of Hoover. So I think that's part of the problem. Every time a new shopping center opens, the people leave where they are, and they go to the new shopping centers. That's why Patton Creek is a ghost town.
Okay, all right, we're running a little short of time. Tamper, I'm gonna let you answer. Robert and Jean have not answered this question. Then we're gonna let Derek talk for just a minute, so Tamper, go ahead.
Okay, raise your hand, Hoover orders from Amazon. Almost everybody. So Amazon is here, and it has changed the everything. So what happens? Stores, if you are going to do the same old-fashioned, go and bring stores and tell them to open shops, the outcome is also going to be always the same. We need to think differently. We need to reimagine Hoover. And the way we reimagine Hoover is, think about it. If businesses don't make money, we don't get sales tax, the schools don't get funds. They are all linked together, like I told you in the previous thing. If we, if we, you know, the young entrepreneurs, if they open up, like if we open up hundred businesses, that's five million dollars of, of tax money that the city gets. We have to be creative of thinking. How are we going to create in this new world? We cannot do things the old-fashioned way. People, the life is changed now for us. And it is going to change real fast. With AI coming, it's gonna change real fast. So we need to think creatively.
All right, very good.
It'll be short and quick. Commercial blight is true, but close second is fiscal restraint. City's spending a ton of money, and, and we need fiscal restraint.
Okay, very good, Robert.
To answer your question, Hoover, as good as it is, it likes to create problems and then try to figure out a way to solve. Real simple. And so we need to reverse that process. Before we open a new development, before we open a new shopping center, we need to make sure that the infrastructure is in place to handle all the traffic and all the, everything that's gonna go through. So we reverse the process. We don't create a problem and then try to find a way to solve.
All right, very good. Well, yes, express our appreciation. So we're gonna take, we're gonna take this company, so if everyone else wants to sit down, Nelson Murphy, thank you for being here. Appreciate that, Derek. And what we, Derek, well, I know you had stuff going on. We give everyone five minutes to just address anything that I want to talk about. I'll give you one minute warning. We give you five minutes. If you want to take your five minutes now, you're welcome to. We have, we have fifteen minutes left in this room, so, so go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you all so much, and give apologies to the council meeting, and I promised the group I'd talk about stormwater, and just wrapped it up. A couple of things here, so when I, I had the pleasure of serving on the Zone Adjustment Board in two thousand and eleven, because I wanted to understand the structure of the city before I even thought about doing any type of elective position, and also got the opportunity to serve on the school board and the school board president as well, too. During that time, I always looked from a problem solver standpoint, what does year ten and fifteen look like, right? One of the things that championed was RC three, which is the vocational program. I saw thirteen, we saw roughly twelve, thirteen hundred kids graduating every year. You put math on that time, ten. Everyone's not going to college, so you're talking about unemployment rates. That's just what the math is. Started looking at Birmingham as a whole. The reason why unemployment rates impacted us quite a bit was because steel was our industry. What happened to steel went away, and employment kind of kicked in. So that's the same process that you look, look, look at. We were able to purchase a particular piece of building, a property, install RC three vocational program. It, it, it does mechanic, teaching mechanics. I'm not talking about theory. We're talking about four bays and lift for cars on them. Individuals are coming out of the coming fire. I'm talking to some parents where one of the kids, one of his children are in Auburn as an engineer, and the other one's a fellow in fire, got his M.T. from the school. And we got a lot of individuals that wanted to pay tuition, like Shepherd County State unit, to come to that program. So that, that was a need, that was needed, and all, it's helping us out as a city when it comes to that. From a city perspective, when I go on the council, we're very antiquated in a lot of different ways. Great city, we're still, I want to keep our family orientation field, but we were not act like a big city, all right? Big cities, we have twenty bridges over four hundred miles of roads. We have a lot of traffic lights, and we only had two engineers. There's more people working at Chick-fil-A than we have engineers in the big, large cities of Alabama. And we went up to six. You cannot expect excellence with lack of people performing several. That's just the way that goes. From a standpoint of, of economic development, many cities are following past practices, rinse and repeat. Looked at Birmingham, if you know about Wolfhahn, even Ansley, they have big buildings in their city, because every city was, every, those neighborhoods were cities at one point, right? The only time you went downtown, maybe it was twice a year, okay? It's because everything was there. If you look at the model of Hoover, it's follow that path. Started looking at Ross Bridge, started looking at the preserve, things of nature. You have restaurants and places you can go. You don't even have to go to Hoover to really get anything, other than make it going to a grocery store or whatnot. So we also fighting against, from a standpoint, although internet is, has taken flight, people are spending in their neighborhoods, not going to a fairytale. We lost Southern Compu in, what, in two thousand and fifteen, had like two thousand employees came out of city each and every day. They went down the street to Birmingham, and they went to the Old Colony Building. And maybe a year later, the, the, the mayor signed his petition saying they were not coaching each other's people. Now, I wish they had did that prior to snatching two thousand from us. But if you look at the Colony, it's doing extremely well, because now you have two thousand people coming there all the time. We have followed that model, we have to use mixed use. The average person does not want to work at a, a, a building, and then they can't go to a festival, go walk to get food and things of nature. I had some architects, I worked for engineering for about five, five years. We had some architects to leave, taking lower money to go to Pepper Place downtown and other places, because it has mixed use to do certain things. So those are the type of models. Look, we, we definitely had antiquated processes. We definitely have built upon having more engineers, built upon having plans, trail plans, things of nature. But my main focal point on my last term has been focusing on infrastructure. Look, infrastructure's not gonna take two or three years. If I tell you that, that's not accurate. I've been in infrastructure for twenty-four years of my life. We're talking about thirty, forty-year process, and we're twenty years behind. We've done more infrastructure work in, in my nine years than any time before. I love this city. My kids have graduated, here two of them, I have a twelve-year-old remaining, and I love the happy support. August twenty-sixth, place five, you're appropriate.
All right, very good. So that was two seconds short of five minutes, so good job. Okay, very good. So just, so y'all, fantastic. Send everybody say thanks to Diane Telet. Where's Diane? Diane, thank you so much for organizing this forum tonight. So just to recap, I'm gonna go back over. So for place one, we have Tamper Patel. We have Robert Schultz. For place two, Copeland Johnson, Jean Smith, they're in the back, and two other folks that didn't show up, only two. All right, and then we, for place three, there's Liz Lane and Ashley Lowell, and one other person that didn't show up. And for place four, Christian Coleman, who had to leave early because his child hurt their foot, and Donna Mazur, right here, and then Councilwoman Kristi Drabber, I'll go ahead and mention her since, okay? And then for place five, we have Steve Lawrence and Councilman Derek Murphy. Place six and place seven are non-contested. So of course, the mayor's race. So we're hoping to have a meeting next month, and hopefully the two mayor candidates will be here. We're working on that now. We'll let you know some about that as we get it planned out. But I want to thank all the candidates for being here tonight. Let me mention one other thing. If you would like to become a member of Hoover Democrats, it's twenty-five dollars a year. We, we use the money for things, you know, around elections and that sort of stuff. Twenty-five dollars a year, just make a check for Hoover Democrats. You can give it to me, our treasurer's not here tonight. And also, if you want to spell Hoover Democrats, it's W-A-Y-N-E-R-O-G-R-S-F-O-R-S-O-S, okay? William Rogers, Secretary of State, my website will be up tomorrow. All right, so anyway, anybody else have anything we need to say? We gotta be out of this room in less than ten minutes, so don't hang around too long. You can talk outside. Thank you all for being here, wonderful job. Thank you all, council members. Appreciate y'all. So you Diane?